Gate is 6:30, I'm gonna call the June 12th, 2023, 6:30 meeting to order. All rise, to the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has everyone had the opportunity to read the meetings from last meeting?
Minutes.
I have, I've made the motion that we pass them as wrote, written.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Everyone reviewed the funeral deeds, payroll vouchers, and adjustments?
I also, I have, and I also will make the motion that we sign those after the meeting.
Second, all in favor? Looks like next we got the annual contracts for Kiwanis Main Street and the Westport Fire Department. Have any representatives from Main Street?
Ms. Connie? You guys sign and she signs.
Thank you Connie for all we do, honey.
Thank you. Thanks to Main Street for everything they do for our town.
I don't think there's anybody from the fire department, and I'm not sure about Kiwanis.
Do we have someone from Kiwanis? Barb is not here.
Anybody from the fire?
Fire department? We'll go ahead and sign these, Ben, as there isn't a representative there. We'll get him to him. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you are. And we thank Kiwanis for what the good work they do here for the community building, and we also thank the fire department for the good that they do here in town.
It must be a Commonwealth update.
Yes.
Yep.
I will, I'd like to just give a brief update on the water and wastewater utilities and the projects. So, on the wastewater project, we had a meeting last week, just a regular check-in meeting. We are currently in the process of permits, still reviewing with the DNR, replanting of the trees. We've gone back and forth with them a little bit, and they're, you know, just, it's just in the process of getting the permit. We are still working with the DNR, a different, a different department at DNR regarding the floodway, because we are, some of the work is taking place in the floodway, so that's, that's another one of the permits we're still waiting on. And then we had some discussion with Alex regarding the easements we need. Several of them have been signed, Alex is in the process, Alex and Damon have been working really hard to get a hold of the rest of the people to get more of them signed. So, we are, I think we're well underway moving forward on the wastewater project. No, no huge issues to talk about on that. I did include just a note on here about the regional planning meetings, which I believe probably just need to reach out to the IFA, because you guys did attend a regional meeting, I think they were just waiting on some proof of attendance or something like that. So, I noticed it hadn't been updated on their website yet, so just wanted to let you know.
I got one in the mail, so.
Okay.
I haven't got proof from AIM yet, I know that they said they would give us proof, but that's what my to-do list, so I'll get that.
I just noticed it wasn't updated yet, and I didn't know if they were behind, or, well, if they haven't, yeah, and they, I don't know how long it takes to put together those attendance lists and whatnot, so. That is all I have on the wastewater, I did want to give a brief update on water if, unless there's any questions on the wastewater side. Okay, last month, we had some discussions regarding earlier, well, actually, it was last year, IDEM performed some testing on the water for PFAS, which is one of the emerging contaminants that EPA is, is working on publishing a standard to regulate. So, IDEM is testing every, every utility in the state, they've gotten through all of the small and medium-sized utilities, and they're now working on the large utilities. They, their process is to perform the samples and then send the results to the community and just publish online whether they detected any trace amounts or not. So, they did this, and I think most of us were aware of this, and we talked about it last month. After they published that online, even though Westport was well below the proposed limits that EPA is working on, which shouldn't take effect until the end of the year, if not later. That process is a lengthy process to get new limits established. Even though we're well below that limit, the state is concerned, and because we're a small community, we reached out to the IFA-SRF, and we said, is there any grant money out there to help the town do more testing? And more planning for, you know, in the future, how, how to remove this or how to avoid it, if it's in the source water. And the IFA replied and said, there is grant money at the federal level that they would like to submit on behalf of the town to receive grant money. And it's, it's not just town of Westport, there's several other small to medium-sized communities that the, the state reached out to. And the first step is just setting up a call with the state to, to make sure that the town is comfortable with the state requesting federal grant money to assist. This money comes from the bill package, so it is available, I believe, for the next three years. So, our preliminary conversations with IFA were, this first year, they would submit, you know, if the town is on board with this, for a grant to do testing, and perhaps some performance testing, testing different medias for removal, or whatever the path that the town decides to take. And then next year, they would like to submit for money to actually implement if there is some sort of advanced treatment or any other modifications that would require construction costs, they would submit for a grant for that through the federal money. But the first step is just testing, and the first step being just testing to even make sure it's there, because the, the testing that IDEM performed was a year ago, it was, it's not an approved test method yet, because there is no approved test, test method for PFAS as of date. So, so anyways, there's, there's a lot of steps in the way, so we have scheduled a conference call for the 16th, which I believe is Friday afternoon, between the board and the state, the SRF, IFA, which is, that is who's applying for this grant. So, that's kind of the update on that, assuming it moves forward. They probably won't know if they've, if we've received any grant money until later this year, at which point we could start working with the water department on doing some more testing and, and finding out if it's actually there. So, that's, that's just an update on that, hopefully that answers any questions people had. I'm, I'm happy to answer any additional questions or comments regarding that.
I'm also, I, I would like to tell everybody that the FSA's are everywhere you look. They're not just in your water, they're in the ground, they're in your clothes, they're in your carpets, they're everywhere. So, don't be afraid of this, I mean, we're just still below where it's supposed to be, but we still have to tell everyone about it. Just something we have to stay ahead of, it's a lot of work to do, yes, but we get it done.
Similar to other emerging contaminants, the easiest place for the government to regulate it is through our water and wastewater utilities. It's much harder to go through the channels of like the FDA and the, you know, our other sources where you may be getting it. So, it's all in the benefit of public health, and in the long term, just like all of the other regulations, the lead and copper rule, and all the other things that we're working through. Eventually, it will be for the greater good.
That's right. And even bigger towns that, like Greensburg, they have a boil water bill right now. It just happens sometimes, it's not.
And I do think it's a really good sign that the state wants to submit for this grant money for the small and medium communities, because, like I said, they're currently testing the large communities, and I am sure that the larger communities also have this. And I would like to see the grant money go to the smaller communities that really need it. So, if I have any say in the matter, at least.
Thank you.
Well, we're here if anyone's got questions.
Thank you.
Any public questions about it? Next on the agenda is zoning permissions, sailor housing development, talking about sidewalk waivers, storm drains, curbs, and variances. Anybody here to talk about that? Move on to the next. Got water adjustment?
This is something, it's future, so we can't calculate the bill until next month when we read the meter, but Jenny wrote up possibly what it would be, just estimated on what she saw on the history, and the highlighted is how much credit you would give if you approved it.
So, you're just getting ahead of the game?
Yeah, pretty much.
That's your estimate for it?
Yeah, that's how much credit. And it's just because it doesn't fall under a leak?
No other adjustments before? That entertainment motion?
I'll make the motion that we, we take care of this. You have never had anything in the past, and your water bill is high, so, yeah, thanks for bringing it to our team.
Second the motion?
Right, thank you.
All in favor? Thank you. Next up would be the Nipro annexation ordinance.
This is the second reading.
Be the second reading? Read this here at the last meeting, just a second bring up of the ordinance to annex the property out at Nipro. Are there any public conversation regarding the annexation? Being none, I entertain the motion to.
Make the motion that we accept is read last meeting.
Second the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Next up would be the Westport Community Building Board of Directors Resolution, 2023-8, be the second reading. Come on up.
I'm Russell Worlson. I was the, Decaden and I were the people that appointed the board to build this community building. The community building, after being completed, Jim Parish was the president of the town board. He appointed a committee to run this board, which have done for 35 years. This was a self-appointed board, because even as your paper work right here, it says Westport Community Building. The money to build this building came from Westport, Sand Creek Township, Jackson Township, Marion Township, and, or Northern Jennings County. The reason it was made a self-appointed board was so that one group could not take it over. Probably the mistake that Jim Parish made was he believed that everybody knew this is a community building, and he did not give them a hundred-year lease. This building is a 501(c)(3) that governs the amount of profit they can make by running the building. I am not against anybody that is, you're appointing, and legally you can do it. But morally, I think you're wrong if you do not have representation from the people that built this building.
I just want to say.
We opened it up for applications for quite a period of time, trying to get people from the various entities that have supported the building to be on part of the board.
John, I want to say this, and I'm not saying it mean. This board has gave this community a sourtaste in our mouth. The committee that was running it ran into trouble with COVID, as everybody knows. That committee, we would have raised the money through the community to do the repairs we need. And I don't know what the funding's gonna be, but I need this board to remember who built this. It was the community, it was not the town. The town put no money in this building whatsoever. It was all donations, donated labor, daily material. Think about that before you make your decision. That's all I got, I just wanted everybody here to know what this building is. For 35 years, these people operated this building, the same way with this park. It was given to the town by primarily Westport Kiwanis, and you've taken the, or taken the park from the Kiwanis, and you've taken the community building from the community.
I will take, we haven't taken the park from the Kiwanis, they, they, it's still part of what they, the responsibility they have.
Do they have a lease on it?
We haven't taken anything away, any responsibility away, they haven't had a lease prior, they don't have a lease now. We've taken no responsibility away from them, we've not told them not to continue anything. So, I just want to make sure that erroneous statements aren't being made. So, you're, you're misleading everybody in the way that you're speaking.
I am going with what I was shown by Kiwanis.
You've been misled.
Yeah. The town contributes money every year, we contribute all the money here every year.
I'm sorry, John, I do.
No, no.
I mean, if you were involved, we're telling people it's supposed to be a community building, and all of a sudden the town takes it over.
Well, what I want you to understand, before you sit down, okay, is the reason that we established this board, okay, is to make sure that the town didn't just take it over. So that.
The town.
The town appointed the board.
I'm mad at anybody, I just want to let the word go.
Well, and I will tell you that I went to a Kiwanis meeting specifically to ask Kiwanis members to be part of the board, and from what I recall, I didn't have any sign up.
Well, it's probably the same reason the community building board refused to sign the lease. You had asked them to sign a paper that they were giving up. Don't shake your head, Bart.
I don't know nothing about that.
There's a lot of legalities that go on with this as well.
Absolutely.
You know.
I'm not arguing you have ever legal right.
No, 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 I mean, there are other legalities that require us in order to maintain this building. You know, there, there was no public funds that were coming in in order for the repair. The repair was coming fast, it was asked of us, or it was asked of the county to put funds in. The county asked us why they were being requested funds to support a town-owned building.
They were going at it from a 501(c)(3). A 501(c)(3) can request grants. I mean, that, that's one of the reasons.
But it wasn't a grant that they were asking for, they were asking for monies from the county.
I can't answer that.
Right, 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 I'm just clarifying.
Yeah, but what I want to clarify is how this building was built.
And, and I understand, you know, and, and I knew Jim, and I wanted to maintain a community building, and that is my full intention, and everything that's going on.
And anybody from the board, I'm not criticizing the board, or who you're appointing, I'm just, I think people need to know the history, because that was 35 years ago.
And I think the people that came onto the board are extremely concerned, one of them is Jenny, granddaughter of Jim. So, I, I, I really believe that she'll have the best intention of what the building is.
Like I say, I don't want no hard feelings, I'm just coming at them.
I, I just want to make sure that you're understanding everything, and, and there's nothing that's being, you know, misunderstood.
Well, like I say, I think it should have stayed self-appointed board.
Understood.
I mean, Jim Parish was involved in building this, I mean, whether I get to heaven or hell, I'm gonna be facing people, and I want to be able to look them in the eye. I don't want to cross the street. And like I say, thank you.
And John, for the record, I want to state that the town contributes money through, to this property through three programs every year, through the Kiwanis, they were previously giving to the community board every year, plus to the Main Street was contributing to this. And we were covering all of the insurance liabilities since the building was built in the 80s. And we applied originally for a grant that we paid, the town contributed money when this building was originally built. I just found that a couple of weeks ago in some old notes from Mark's office. So, the town put money in this building from the very beginning of its construction.
So, we've talked about it now for at least two months, if not more. And the intention is to maintain the integrity of the community building for the community. Everything that we've done in looking at this has been to make sure that that takes place. We actually waited a longer time for applicants to be on the board. Once we had those applicants, then they were appointed. There's also the opportunity for other ones to be appointed as things go along. Other than, Richard, is there anything else? Anybody else got comment about? Do I have any, do I have a motion on the floor for, to pass this? Second the motion, all in favor? Home Rural Fund for the Community Building Deposits Ordinance, we're creating an ordinance so that we have a fund to put the money into, so that deposits that are made can be put in and then brought back out. So, we gotta have an ordinance for that.
Did you announce the council members for the community building?
Just remind everybody for the council members, for the, for the Community Building Board, for the period of two years is Connie Davis, Barb Winchester, and Melissa Deppi. And for the term of one year, Karen Webster and Jennifer Ridd. All of them would be able to reapply per the ordinance for continued terms. So, this is an ordinance of the Town Council to establish the Westport Area Community Building Non-Reverting Fund. It's ordinance number 2023-5. Whereas Indiana Code 3613 confers upon units of government within the state of Indiana such powers as necessary or desirable to conduct the affairs of local government, and whereas Indiana Code 36136 grants the town of Westport, Indiana, the ability to exercise a power through the adoption of an ordinance where there is no constitutional or statutory provision requiring a specific manner otherwise, and whereas Indiana Code 36529 authorizes the town of Westport, Indiana, to pass such an ordinance, orders, resolutions, and motions, as may be necessary and proper for the governmental unit to fulfill and satisfy the responsibilities and dates of said government unit, or check, and duties of said government unit. And whereas the Westport Area Community Building is located on a property owned by the town and provides the community with indoor and outdoor spaces for social, educational, and recreational activities, and whereas the town has a vested interest in, in ensuring that the Westport Area Community Building is maintained and operated in a manner that promotes growth and economic development in the town of Westport, and whereas the town wishes to establish a non-reverting fund to accumulate any income generated from renting the indoor and outdoor facilities and spaces of the Westport Area Community Building. The income generated from the Westport Area Community Building rental deposits will be used to defray the costs of the operation, maintenance, and upkeep of the Westport Area Community Building facilities, and whereas the non-reverting fund shall be designated as fund number 8852 in Town of Westport Clerk Treasurer's Office. Now there it be ordained by the Town Council of the Town of Westport, Indiana, as follows. The Westport Area Community Building Fund number 8852 in the Town Westport Clerk Treasurer's Office is hereby created. Fund number 8852 shall be continuing non-reverting fund that is maintained by the Town West, Town of Westport Clerk Treasurer's Office. The Town of Westport Clerk Treasurer shall receive, invest, and reinvest funds received from all sources of the Town of Westport. received from all sources of the town of Westport Clerk Treasurer is authorized to pay from said fund expenses associated with the Westport Area Community Building, including but not limited to operation costs, maintenance costs, and upkeep costs. The income generated from renting the indoor and outdoor facilities and spaces of the Westport Area Community Building shall be deposited in Fund Number 8852. Funds from Fund Number 8852 shall be used without appropriate to defray the cost of operation, maintenance, and upkeep of the Westport Area Community Building. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage by the town council. Have a motion to pass the ordinance?
I make the motion that we pass the ordinance.
Second. All in favor?
Does that approach the reading?
Yes.
We'll have it another next time too then, unless we need to.
Well, it's not going to spend any money, so we can pass this on the first.
Okay, I make the motion to pass.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Water Alliance Apprenticeship Agreement and Wages.
So John, there's a couple of things on here. We have to sign the Employer Acceptance Agreement. And it's just basically saying that we agree to participate in the Alliance of Indiana's apprenticeship program. So that's the first one. I put all Shane stuff in here on the front. I didn't do that yet. But you sign on the back for that one. We just need at least one council member to approve that. And then the Scope of Services Agreement basically outlines the benefits that we have through the program. We'll have eligibility of financing through a few different things. I just want to outline that because the cost of the apprenticeship program, which is at least two hundred and eighty-eight hours of training, it includes course fees and textbooks, will be covered up to $7,000 for apprentice. The cost of a laptop, up to $700, will be reimbursed to the utility for the apprentice's use. And the cost of the apprentice's payroll expenses during the two-year apprenticeship program will be fully paid through their program. So essentially, we're getting a free worker for two years, minus his training. So it's really cool. It's through their IFA program, so this is a limited opportunity. It expires in 2026. We will get up to $56,570 to cover the salary for Shane's expenses over the next couple of years. That's pretty amazing. So it's an exciting program. And if we were, if we had the opportunity of getting a wastewater person involved too, we could do this through the wastewater program as well and send another one in basically for free. So that's something to keep thinking about how we would make that happen. But at least we've got the water side started, and so far Shane's doing pretty good. So here's the two things we have to agree to.
We've already had a conversation last couple of months over this, benefits, everything else, discussed and appointed and hired Shane earlier. I think it's important to understand that we've got employees that are getting ready to retire and be done. This particular program is beneficial because I think there's a 12% pass rate on the test for this particular-
Certification.
Certification. So it's not real easy to pass. So to make sure that we've got somebody that's going through the education and all the supported information required in order to make that happen. So we have a solid candidate, someone ready to take over. Things extremely important in this opportunity was something that we just couldn't pass up. Like Laurie said, we had also discussed the possibilities of sewer because there's a different certification for each. So hopefully, we'll have the opportunity to look at that soon as well. Any public comment regarding that?
I just want to also say that I don't know how anyone could pass this up because we're getting, we're not having to pay for his schooling and even his wages. And we all just love him. He's a smart kid.
We started out knowing it would be some benefit, but we didn't know that we would qualify for as much benefit as we did. So it all fell into place, and I think it was meant to be.
Yes.
But it was a great opportunity, and we still have more opportunity. We could still use the same funding to do the apprentice for the wastewater too. And then the second part, John, after you guys approved the agreements, is they base his wages on a staggered increase as he completes the training. So we have to, we started him out at $17 an hour, but we need to determine for their program what his ending wage will be when he comes out of that program in two years. So I need to be able to tell Kelly what to put on the grant paperwork for that. So.
How soon do you need to have that?
Tonight, if possible. By July 1st.
Do we know when, how many jump ups he's got to do, how many smacks?
Six of them, wasn't there?
Yeah, four or six. I can't remember. It might, I'm not sure if I outlined it on that, like on that part. But they basically said, we'll build it in, whatever we say in the community that is, we'll build it in. I can't believe what like how much he would make two years from now because he can have talent issues when it's a little over eighteen. I can't tell if she said, some go as well as Mike and some go higher. Then I took it after his graduation. Looked at some different things. I know that clearly was a little hard. My personal opinion is one of them. Our starting wage for utility workers is at market level. Starting wage is around $300. So if we get-
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's fine. So.
It averages about two and a half years by the time they get through the program.
So the schooling at minimum is two in two years.
Do you want to answer? Well, I know what the answer is. Once they have completed their program, the town has the opportunity. And what I'm going to recommend, what Kelly from the program recommended, is that we do a separate ordinance, and Alex will have to probably help me create that, that will determine his starting wage, all the way through his final wage, what the town's expectations are, and how long they expect him to stay on board. And there's guidelines through the apprenticeship program that Shane also has to sign. He had to sign commitment as well, and he doesn't complete the program. There's options to both the high and through the grant funding because the town is not going to be at a loss because it's all grant funding. We won't be at a loss, but it could be a penalty to Shane if he didn't complete the program. Now, if it's because he can't pass the test, the Alliance through their apprenticeship program has some things put in place to help them be able to complete that certification and pass the test because it is challenging not to pass it, and that could happen. You never know. I don't want to say that because Shane's a really smart guy. But if it comes down to that, that's why we have the coverage of the apprenticeship program because their goal is to get people completely 100% certified through that program.
And I know where you're coming from because we run that risk with every employee that we have once we invest in them and train them and do everything else, you know. Our police department has a large investment in that in any officer too. It's anywhere from $6,000 to $12,000 once it's done. So there's a large investments in a couple of them, and I understand your concern.
And the police would be more dedicated to the job where they wouldn't be doing it for the amount of money they do it for. I'm just saying, it's human nature. It's easy to make quite so much money while they're factories that can't hear.
I think if we went out and put this on Indeed, just for example, you know, and pulled somebody in that already had the certification, didn't put the time in for the apprenticeship here, that yes, we would probably end up with somebody who would probably be a short duration if they could find something else. I think we're in a much better situation having his schooling go through here, his apprenticeship go through here, stuff like that. So I do think that this is a benefit for a better long-term employment.
I had no problem with it.
Right.
It's not, it's not a question of whether, it's when you do the job.
Right. Yeah, yeah, and I share your concern because this is a very complicated career. So it's not something you just grab somebody and go.
You don't have somebody to show them that they got that job, they got it.
Yep. So as we discussed before, all the salaries.
This is our list. I'm a brand new guy, but to me, I'm also a business guy. So it's whole six, what you guys are doing. I just convince the board and people that it's trying to take, it takes a lot of time, drag and cringe to do all that. But my understanding, I understand what Russell's saying, but I, from my understanding, it costs the city nothing.
That's right.
To train him. So if he walks out tomorrow, or three years from now, then it costs the city anything.
Well, other than we're back at square one without an operator, and that's the hard part, yeah.
Yes, correct, because this is a temporary. Yeah. The problem is, it's written in legislation this year, but our governor's up for election, and they could come in next year and totally change that program. We, our Indiana Alliance has their foot in the door with the people at the state level, and their goal is to keep this program going because we're one of many, many rural water programs and wastewater programs throughout the state that is in the same position because almost all of our certified leaders are either retiring or going to retire within the next five years. It's unfortunately kind of been a dying career where no new people have moved into it, so.
It's not easy.
No, it's not easy. And as we've already discussed, everything was already falling within our current salary ordinances. We weren't having to change anything other than once this is up, like she described, we'll create an ordinance once the training's complete.
And part of the reason for the separate ordinance is because he will get raises throughout the year versus our normal employees usually only get about one annual raise. So it would be a different program altogether than our normal employees are in.
And that's just step-ups as he completes certain milestones.
Well, I make the motion that he gets up to 21 before we give him this final.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll entertain a motion to accept the employer acceptance contract and the agreement. Do I got a motion? Second motion. All in favor?
Aye.
No, just the very, very back. Just right at the top there. Gee, what, just this one here at the very bottom, gee. Next on this is the solar eclipse of 2024. Some of you may or may not know, April 8th of 2024, between noon and roughly 3:00 p.m., we are in the prime zone for a viewing of a solar eclipse that will not occur for a very extended period of time afterwards. Supposedly, it's one that gets extremely dark, and we're in the corridor for prime viewing. Possibility of this particular county having an increase of population of 20,000 to 50,000 people for that period of time. So it would be quite an increase in population. So we don't, we fully expect the schools to maintain schooling using this particular event as an educational purposes. So we really don't have space for a large event to bring people to and to open it up. I'm sure many of our community members will end up entertaining requests to put tents up in their yard possibly or anything else, or be shooing them out of their fields, one or the other. I'm not really quite sure very well. The main request here is just talking with the board. Any other issues with the public is ensuring that we have our emergency services available during this period of time. So we are inviting the Westport Fire Department to assist in the community-wide coverage in addition to the police department. So what I'd just like to make sure is that the community is fine and the rest of the board is fine with supplying the county with the assistance of our emergency services. Any public comment?
I just want to say thank you that we, I mean, thanks for telling us this, but yeah, I appreciate it.
There'll be some other meetings going on with a separate board regarding that. I've been invited to. We'll have other discussions. If there's anything else, I'll bring it to the attention of the town. Next is Resolution 2023-9 proposing an increase of town council members. Joyce, maybe read this one. Resolution 2023-dash-nine, a resolution to propose an increase in town council membership. Whereas the town of Westport, Indiana, town from here on forward, is duly formed municipal corporation within the state of Indiana governed by its duly elected legislative body, the town council. Whereas Indiana Code 3652-4.2 provides that the legislative body may adopt a resolution to submit a public question on the number of legislative body members to the voters of the town. Whereas the town council believes that it is in the interest of the town to increase the members of the town council from three members to five members. Whereas the town council desires to adopt a resolution to submit to the voters of the town a public question concerning increasing the number of members of the town council from three members to five members, and now therefore be resolved by the town council of the town of Westport, Indiana, in accordance with the provisions of Indiana Code 3652-4.2 as follows. It is a decision of the town council to submit to the voters of the town of Westport, Indiana, a public question concerning an increase in the number of members in the town council. The town council proposes an increase in the number of town council members from three members to five members. The date of the election at which this public question will appear on the ballot is November 7th, 2023. The following question will be placed on the ballot in form provided by Indiana Code 3652-4.2. Shall the number of town council members be increased from three to five? from three to five? That will be the question that would be proposed on the ballot. So it's been discussed of raising the number of members from three to five. All of us have kind of thought that that'd be in the best interests of the town itself. To ensure that the community felt the same way, we would like to put on the ballot the question for everybody to answer. Shall the number of town council members be increased from three to five? Put that in the November 7th election and allow everybody to decide. Do we have any public comment on that? Russell?
Eventually, three elections will pass through. They're different terms.
Correct. So we would still elect three for this term, okay? But two years after, I believe it would take 2026, correct me if I'm wrong, Alex, the next two, if this is passed, would be elected in the November election of 2026. And then you would have three elected and two elected and staggered elections.
Which I think is a good idea because if you got three people eliminated, somebody's coming in with a real mess. I mean, you need some problems.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Was there anything I missed, Alex?
No, I don't have the statute in front of me, but my recollection is that after that, if that were to be successful at the ballot in November, that there may be capability for the council members to elect the other two members to fill that term.
By appointment?
By a preference. And then there's only once in a future, because I know there's an interest in staggering the members of the town council so that not everyone comes up for reelection at the same time.
Right.
What we would do then, I believe it's next year, is we would need to pass something, pass an ordinance, I believe, a new resolution that would then, that would then ultimately end up with staggered terms for the, at that point in time, currently elected members of the town council.
So then you would have an appointment that would be up to the next election.
Yeah, you would effectively shorten some of the times. And then.
For that first process.
For that first process. And then so they would tell reelection sooner than the other ones. And then from there on out, they would all have the same terms that you just had.
Makes sense. That way, you're not starting with a new board every time. It's not as easy as it looks.
Any other public comment? You get a motion to pass the rules and pass this on a first reading? A second? All in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye, as well? They just keep on coming, don't they?
I know it. You thought you said.
Ordinance 2023-6, amending the animal control ordinance fees. Ordinance number 2023-6, an ordinance to amend the animal control ordinance number 2022-4 of the town of Westport, Indiana. Whereas Indiana Code 3613 confers upon the units of government within the state of Indiana such powers as necessary or desirable to conduct the affairs of local government. Whereas Indiana Code 364618 authorizes the town council of the town of Westport, Indiana, town from here on, to pass such ordinances, orders, resolutions, and motions as may be necessary and proper for the governmental unit to fulfill and satisfy the responsibilities and duties of said governmental unit. Whereas the town council previously adopted ordinance 2022-4, repealing and replacing all prior animal control ordinances with the unified ordinance addressing animals within the town of Westport, Indiana, and whereas it is a desire of the town council to amend ordinance 2022-4 to update the cost of redeeming impounded animals under Section 2E. Now therefore be it ordered by the town council of the town of Westport, Indiana, Section 1, ordinance 2022-4, Section 2, parentheses, E, is hereby amended and shall be, shall read as follows. Redemption. Any animal impounded may be redeemed by the owner thereof within three business days upon payment of a boarding fee of $15 per day and/or any expenses related to pickup and/or care of the animal prior to release. Payment of the impoundment fees is not considered to be in lieu of any fine, penalty, or fees. Any animal confined for rabies quarantine, evidence, or other purpose may be redeemed by the owner thereof upon payment of a boarding fee of $15 per day and/or any expense related to pickup and/or care of the animal prior to release. No animal required to be vaccinated under this ordinance may be redeemed until provisions for such vaccination have been fulfilled. Section 2, this town ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage by the town council. Does this require two readings? I believe it does. Does it?
It would require two reads unless we had the members vote and pass it. The citizens' lobby would pass it.
Any public comment regarding the amendment to the ordinance?
John, just to explain, the reason it was updated is because the county changed their fees, and we are aligned with the county because.
They're the ones that would do the boarding.
Yeah, they would be the one boarding, doing any penalties and that stuff. So it's just to keep it in line.
There's no public comment? Nope, go ahead.
Well, so if you see something going on and you worry and they don't really think about it, what? Does the county have to do something about it to get the problem taken care of, or what?
You'll have to help me on that. You'll have to help me a little more on what you're asking.
There's a dog, and exactly where the dog is, it's pitiful as looking back over saying, I called the health, the animal control services and reached them three times. No response. What do you do next?
My suggestion next, barring the town itself adopting an animal control officer and, you know, taking on the burden of that expense, would be to attend the county meetings and ask for more enforcement and/or more funds to that department so that they could better take care of the needs. Yep.
Doris, is the dog loose? Is the dog loose?
No, they've got to change it. Someone almost sickened it. So I go by check on him all the time. He's still just as pitiful as he ever was. I don't know what to do about it.
We used to do it here locally, but it became too much of a burden because we'd have to have people come and check on it, feed it, water it, do all of that. We took on that responsibility, too. So, you know, if we didn't take care of that animal, well, then we were just as guilty as anybody else for neglecting the animal. So it was just something we didn't have the time to do, so we relied on county resources.
That's why I didn't call the county and say anything. I called the county animal director and voiced my concern, and I've done it three times, and it's not been.
Or it's been evaluated and determined that even though it may not be the situation you would keep your own dog in, that there's nothing lawfully that that organization can do. Yeah, I understand.
I know that there's been several complaints that they're not doing their job, and Harry met with them about three or four weeks ago and talked to them personally. He gave them a copy of our ordinance, and that's where we found out that the fines weren't the same, but she said they would enforce our ordinance. So they now have that information, and we had some things that the county didn't have, like keeping your animals in after 10:00 PM and not leaving them chained unsupervised all through the night, stuff like that.
Those are things where we can impose fines, not so much as the shelter.
It still has to go through the shelter. Any enforcement regarding animals, the way our ordinance is written, unless Alex can correct me, is that we have to go through.
Police Department can enforce local ordinance with a fine.
Yeah, there's a part associated with violations.
So our law enforcement can impose a fine?
Right, but the Sheriff's Department cannot. The Sheriff's Department cannot enforce the but town marshals can.
I thought it was only an animal control officer.
Yeah, yeah, we don't need them in the cars carrying them up, soiling them, anything else that's going on. We just don't have the facilities for that.
So if the officers apply fines, how will that process work with the clerk's office?
So it would be just like any other ordinance that we've imposed for grass, lawn care, anything like that. And then if it isn't maintained, then it would go through the civil structure.
I went over to him, he was like, "Good." They told me that he was fine. He was sitting on his foot. And he said, "He's fine." And I'm looking at him, I'm like, "Is he really? He is not fine." But I can't do anything, you know?
Right.
You know, I'm not. I can take the leg off of me. I make me go better, but I'm not. But I'm serious. It's really always bad. No?
I do know that they have been trying really hard to do and get around, but very, very limited resources in that department, very limited resources. So getting out and about and hitting all the places, it's very difficult with what they've got. There's no public comment against this. I entertain a motion to go against the rules of order of passing first. Motion to pass it? Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Water treatment plant leak cleanup approval. What do we have on that?
I would ask Damon to explain this if you would.
Yeah. Basically, what it is, I mean, you guys know how it works, but after so many hours of runtime on the water plant, we backwash the filters to get all the dirt and all that stuff out that comes out of the water, and they go into two very small lagoons, maybe both of them together, size of this room, half-size bigger. Basically, when our last IDEM inspection, they weren't pleased with how it was cleaned out, so they want it cleaned out their way and how they proposed it. And unfortunately, that's the expensive way, and the expense for that is $52,585.
What's the second price here at 30?
If we can get them to agree to that one, that is basically cleaning out the lagoons, taking it to the sewer, storing it till it dries out, retesting it, and land planting it. But coming with that is, you know, getting a farmer to allow us to apply it on their.
I think that's the way we went the last time, wasn't it?
They did with the sewer project.
Oh, it was a sewer project.
Yeah, when they cleaned the lagoons out there. So that would be the cheaper price if we can go that route. So basically, you know, we want to start high and hope for the low. So this, the $52,585 is what would cost them on the high end. And that's what that is, is basically just testing it and take it to a certified landfill that will take it and going in a big hole, just like to do all the other trash versus putting it on a field. And unfortunately, that's the most expensive way.
This is an IDEM requirement?
Yeah, they said you will do it. It was on our last inspection.
Laurie, where would the funds come from in order to cover this?
Well, we have enough funds right now to cover it. The bad thing, though, is our backup funds is approximately about $150,000. If we had to do this every year for the next three years, we'd be bankrupt.
Is this a yearly?
We're hoping not. They haven't got that, they haven't went that far with it yet.
Did we have it?
We haven't done it in a couple of years.
Did we just do it with the project?
Eight, nine that I know of.
We did do it in the project, and it's still being stored. And it was obviously a lot cheaper having somebody local do it versus a company. I don't know.
Well, it looks like it's an hourly rate, so yeah, I mean, if there's less material, less medium to take out.
In my opinion, there shouldn't be much in there. So we just did it in a project, so I don't understand. I know she wasn't happy with the cattails in it. I mean, you dig them out, you're still going to have cattails. So I don't know. And we just, we don't have an excavator, you know, big enough, obviously, to reach out there and clean it out. Because you only take out down to the solid pan, you know, it's not like you're not digging it any deeper. So you're only taking out the sludge that settles before the water goes onto the pond.
And you're talking about the two, well, no, you're not talking about the intake up top.
No, we're talking about the two lagoon, the two small lagoons directly behind the Clearwell.
Okay.
That's where all the backwash water goes, and that's everything settles in there, and then the clean water goes out to the pond.
They clean those out?
We have, yes. But we have to do it their way. We was wrote up for it. They want it done their way.
So whatever we did during the project wasn't to their standards?
Yeah, not to their standards. They're not happy with it.
If that has the documentation from the $52,000, what is that engagement company to hold this service?
Yeah, that's them doing everything. They'll do the testing.
Bainbridge Consulting manages the entire process.
Right. We have, we're finding, well, what we're finding out is, well, they're the closest ones, but they're still using local contractors. Like, it was my understanding, the contractor that gave them the bid was CH&amp;M, which we use all the time. But CH&amp;M is only, the way I understand it, certified to do it under their certification. Not everybody has these certifications.
So there's a certain certification required in order to perform this certain task?
And the testing and all that.
Is this the only, this is the only approach that we've seen from someone that has a certification?
Yes.
I think it is a dollar amount. If you require, I'm seeing an RFP, the person who proposed it, and then, and still has bids, and public, and then evaluated, and then taken under by them. If all of the credentials were to be good, so it's close, it's a dollar amount.
Well, I understand that. So what do we do if there's the other companies, no one else is close enough that was even interested in bidding it?
At least we've bid it and done our due diligence to see. Because again, they could reach out to local contractors still.
Right.
You know, and just extend their services and their certification.
I don't have it with me, obviously, but yes, they come back. The way IDEM works is when they do their inspection and they find stuff they don't like, you have so many days to respond to it. You have to tell them what you're doing, how you're fixing it, blah, 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 and then you have so much time to fix it. Do you know what the timeframe is there, Rachel? There is a timeframe, but I don't know what I'm talking about.
There's nothing here in this, in this letter saying anything.
But you know, with IDEM, you know, as long as you're pursuing it and you're working on it, they'll work with you to, they will give you a deadline, and you want to have it done before that deadline. Or it could be just expensive with the project.
Yeah, I think considering it's that much money that we entertain, at least some others, if we can find them. And if they come back and just tell you, no, they're not going to do it because of the distance and everything else, I mean, at least we.
At least we put it out.
At least we put it out there. Do you agree?
Heritage transport comes down in here, and they're out in Indianapolis, so I think we want to at least.
Well, that's for the transportation of the material, not necessarily certification to do the work.
To actually do the work and the testing.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. You can't just, you can't do, we just can't hire Joe Hanningman to go over there and dig it out.
That's why IDEM does it.
Right, right. They work with IDEM. Heritage is, I'm sure there's been.
Thank you, Damon. Don't have anything else on the agenda? Open up to public comments? You got something else?
As we know, we've set money aside to work on the community building here, updating it and saving other entities' money and helping them out. I've been getting quotes on the building and different things, like for instance, the locks on that door there. I've been getting quotes on the the building and different things, like, for instance, the locks and that door there. One I want to get to see if we can approve tonight is the new windows that we the building badly needs. I did call four different companies. One company wouldn't do it at all because they consider it's a commercial building. The other company wouldn't do it because they wanted to put commercial windows in. And I said, yes, it's a commercial building, but we have residential window. We don't need commercial buildings or commercial windows in this building. So I was able to get two additional quotes, one from Columbus from Window World and the other one from Universal Windows. And that's replacing every every window in the building. Universal Window was thirteen five eleven and Window World was seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. So it's a lot, lot cheaper. And and I said, the money is it's not asking for additional money. We Lori has already set it aside to I'm just asking to to use roughly eight thousand dollars of that for the new windows.
Because the other companies wanted to do the full aluminum exterior and the whole night.
Well, a lot of commercial ones are your solid glass windows with aluminum frames. That's not what this building is. It's it's not a storefront. I don't understand why we'd go through the expense of that.
I agree.
When we already, you know, we have basic residential windows in the building. And they did the Universal Window. They basically just gave me a piece of paper, no warranty information, no nothing. I wasn't real impressed with their presentation.
The twelve thousand?
Yeah, thirteen thirteen five. Window World, all their warranties here. I personally used them before and they they do do very good work. I'd rec I would recommend, yeah, they're from Columbus. I'd recommend we go with them to basically ask permission to go ahead.
They're a little over seven, right?
Yeah, they were seven nine. Seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-five cents.
That's for all the windows?
That's for all the windows and that's wrapping them and everything.
That's second to motion. All in favor?
Uh, just to give you an update, so we are getting estimates on getting the siding and overhangs and gutters and all that fixed. Putting together a few other things, working with the quantities on the parking lot curves and getting repainted and stuff. So it's in progress, but slow. I found out today, I think we finally found it, but parking lot paint was just crazy. He said he don't know if he'll be able to get the white this year or not. That's that's how far behind parking lot paint is. And we use it all over town. So he thinks he may have found a a couple of five gallon cans to at least get it started. So we can get some of them, but some of it's going to be held up because of that.
The foundation thing, the problem that it has, is that going to be addressed?
Well, the ones I've talked to doesn't seem to think the I I don't think it's so much a foundation problem. It's just the the slab itself in that corner. Where it was, we've been told how that, you know, the reason that happened. But, you know, every bit I've gotten or received so far, none of them will quote the front wall because it's going to be a time and material thing. Because you you're not going to know what damage is there until it's torn off. The only thing I have found out is I know a lot of people is wanting the stone off the building. But me and Connie talked about too. I don't if we take the stone all the way off, the front's going to have to come off for the repairs, obviously. But if we were to take the stone off the whole building, that would pretty much going to burn our whole budget up on that project. So I don't know if we're going to be able to afford to do that, you know, all of at once or or something. It's just it's astronomical, so.
Like, just continue to discuss that with the board members.
Yeah, I've been running everything through them. She 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 talks to the other ones. I haven't got that with her yet because I just found that out. But I got another company coming tomorrow. Actually, I'm sorry, I got two companies coming tomorrow to give us two more bids on the exterior. So just an update there.
Appreciate it.
And John, we have things in the works to get great money to assist with more updates on the building.
Because that opened up once we.
It'll open up. Once the income, yeah, once the income survey is complete, they haven't been able to get enough surveys. People aren't participating in the survey. We we just need like twenty surveys to be done.
I'll bring that up for everybody listening. There's income surveys that come in the mail through the engineering firm for us. In order for us to get grant money.
They've completed two melings and now we have copies in the office in case we catch somebody that was on their targeted group. It's not for the towns' use. So I know people were hesitant about paying your income for the rain, but I made a third one. So it's a process and it's delayed because we're waiting on that money. We were supposed to have gotten it or the surveys. We were supposed to have them complete by April and then we would have been applying for the grant in May. But we missed that cutoff because we didn't get any surveys back in time.
So if you know of anybody that got one and has questions about it, maybe now you can answer. Help us get those.
I I know people say, well, I don't even want to know what I make. And I'm thinking.
And it's going to the grant writer and it's a survey. It's randomly picked.
Going to the government or the tax office or nothing like that.
Even harder. We can't just have somebody come in and hand them a form. There's like a lottery system that gets mailed out.
And the reason for that is because in our last census, our rates went up. Our income rate went higher. So their goal is they feel like it's not accurate presentation of the community. So that's why they're doing it. If we can't get it, then we'll go with those rates and still apply for funding. But it would be nice to get the lower rate if possible.
I know Luke came in. It's usually his day off. Did you have anything to come up, talk about? Yep. Okay.
And we would like to use the lot by the dam for parking that day while we have our wedding, her wedding there on September 2nd. And I was told I needed to come here and ask permission.
Do we have anything going on September 2nd?
Was it September 2nd?
Yeah, September 2nd. I don't I doubt it. I don't know what mowing and stuff is like.
We've already got approved for the through the county to use the bridge. So we've got that part approved already.
I don't have any issue with it.
You're the only one that's asked so far, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Damon, will we have to put that on a list to have that chain removed or anything?
Yeah, it's on my calendar, but yeah, we'll make sure it's.
And if it's wet, just let everybody know to to keep an eye on it down here. It it can get pretty soggy. Anybody else? Items for discussion?
Always being. The scene cleanings on Main Street.
Yes.
Okay, it's helping on Main Street, not helping on Las Street. Because they're coming off of three, turning right on Lincoln, going down to Dean, going up to Elizabeth. Fast as they can go to get around.
Well, the sign. It it is quite funny. The sign does nothing but make you feel naughty. That's it. Okay. So if they have a guilty conscience by going by that, well, all the better. It also provides a a large amount of data. So so he he'll get information on somebody that go over, you know, the a certain speed limit. They get alerts, they get different things that they can use to facilitate some things. But I don't I don't know that either of that gets around the sign. Maybe Dean Street, maybe Dean Street, but.
Well, I'm just saying, they're flying down our street. It's just it's crazy. And I tracked down the new little gang.
Okay, yeah.
He's an isolated.
He is, yeah.
And he says, if you are having problems with the holy ducks, with the pellet duck, I'll add a pellet. But he said, yeah, ducks are good.
Any discharge of anything with a projectile within town limits is against the ordinance, so just let you know.
No, he he just said that they are, there is no stipulation to firing at their own pellet.
Yeah, they're 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 not considered wild game, so they're not regulated in any hunting season.
And another question, do these chairs, are these chairs back here this far for a reason? I didn't bet on that.
Other than that's where they chose to set them up, yeah.
Well, because I can't hear a word anybody says when I'm moving up there.
Okay. Truly noted. I think they have trouble even hearing us over the thing, too.
When they turn you back up there, I can hear the voice.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Anything else from the audience? Yep.
I watch that sign light up every evening for kids being how quick they can get from babies all the way in parks. Through the park, it's stop signs. I have photos showing forty-five mile an hour. But I say no, I do anything about it. We've got little kids, me, my neighbor, your new grandparents, we got little kids. They don't care.
It 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 becomes it becomes extremely difficult. I I myself parked out there this week in an attempt to try and get something. But they see you all the way down the street.
Oh, yeah, they know you're there.
So when you when you when you attempt the enforcement, you slow them down for that period of time. And it may be for a little bit beyond that. But and and I do know that that Luke is out quite often, too. And he's even tried to back in further so that they're not seeing him coming down the street, if you've noticed. But but, yeah, it's it it it's it's a shell game, but.
It's constant. And I think it's it's a constant problem. But even once you put that sign up that's telling them how fast they're going, they know they're going that fast.
It doesn't show you that, though.
What?
It won't show you forty-five miles per hour.
When does it top out? Okay. So there are parameters that.
Well, that's just it. We know they're doing this, why are we not doing something about it?
And we are attempting to. But what else we could do from this point? Because, again, when you attempt the enforcement, they know you're there. And then everything slows down for a period of time and then you leave. And then because there's limited places for us to sit instead. So maybe it could be a conversation we can have on different enforcement methods. Okay, there are a few I have in mind. But it would create, it it would require, necessitate at least three people. But I'll see if we can't figure that out. So. Well, I mean, now you're talking about it, stop signs and, you know, everything else. I mean, I I've I've heard of speed bumps and, you know, a lot of other different things. But do even yourself, do you want to be burdened by the speed bump in the road? I, you know, I don't know.
I just want to take that as enforcement to where it is not such a danger to people who are walking, even on the sidewalk. Because I'm sorry, when you you know when they're flying past you.
Yeah.
And when you're pushing a baby in a trailer, that really doesn't set you up.
I'll talk with Luke about some other enforcement options and see if we can set some stuff up. All right.
It's just kind of, it just it seems like as soon as school lets out, it just gives a run.
Yeah.
And we deal with it for a while, then it'll slow down for a little bit and that's it.
It'll build somebody hanging out. Yeah, and 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 I know that Luke has really been paying some special attention to stop signs and speeding. So they're they're they take advantage of when you're not there. But we'll look at some of their options, maybe to where it's not as noticeable while we're there. How's that? That's correct.
So we figure how can we turn mile an hour down Main Street if we're going twenty miles an hour?
State law, state law dictates in unposted rural areas as thirty miles an hour. Our our town ordinance dictates that particular section of roadway at twenty miles an hour.
At what?
At twenty. So we have a specific town ordinance that changed from that from thirty to twenty. So that specific piece of roadway in our ordinance is is different than the state law of an unposted residential area of thirty miles an hour, which we have quite a few of them. I mean, my little area is thirty miles an hour as well. And I understand your frustration. Yes, yeah. It's a it's an unposted residential area. Yeah, according to state law, it's thirty miles an hour.
I know there was discussion early two thousand nineteen going into twenty about making the entire town a twenty mile per hour zone. So maybe if enough people want that, but you still have to enforce it, whether it is or not. And I think parents need to be out there supervising because Kyle and I were driving down Main Street here going probably nineteen. We had just passed the speed sign and there's a little girl with a little like bike with training wheels on it in the middle of the road, just trotting down the middle of the road. And I'm thinking, where's your mom? Lucky we're going really slow, lucky people are seeing her, but where's the parents, too?
Well, and then, I mean, at forty-five or forty miles an hour, well, then, of course, you know, we've got other issues. So, I mean, with without the town looking to entertain a a complete twenty mile an hour speed limit ordinance. And I'm quite sure we would get quite a few people in here upset about that if we started to entertain that. I'm just, I I know we would. But, I mean, if that's something that we want to entertain, we could start that discussion. You know, we can add it to the agenda for next month and see how many people come in here for or against it and see what we can do there. Once that's changed, once the ordinance is changed. Anybody, whether that's county. So we talked about how the animal ordinance is only enforceable by the marshals. Speed limit change, it would be enforceable by both the sheriff's department, state police, whoever it is that's going to do enforcement here. So that's a little bit different than the way it's written.
Will we have to do any studies or anything?
I don't know because there's no state road involved. I don't know if we would have to do a traffic study, but I'd have to look into that. So when we wanted to change it forty-five miles an hour all the way out to Nipro, we were we were required to do a a traffic study for the state because it it was a state road. We may not have to do that for the ordinance here as far as the towns are concerned, the town streets. We can go that route. Talk about it next month. All right. Anything else? Motion to adjutant meeting?
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye.
So be it.
So be it.
So I have questions, John.